Okay, habla con ella. ¿De dónde me hablas? Cuando me encuentras, pues sé que hablas con ella. Me habla.
Okay.
Yeah, it's difficult sometimes, yeah. I don't know.
Good morning, everybody. If I can ask you to please come to order. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall, especially to all the kids in the audience. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. The council meets every Thursday, Wednesday, and Friday at 8:00 AM. This is a Friday. A part of our tradition, the Friday. Is to allow for consultations and residente's. The city council to distinguish guests from throughout the city of Los Angeles. So today, I'd like to begin consultations by calling upon Councilmember Ed Reyes. Thank you, Councilperson Padilla. Members of the council, good morning. Today, we have a gentleman here in council chambers who, after serving on the city's community action board for the past six years, will be stepping down. Dr. Peter Rivera was first elected to the CAB in 1995, but he represented the Harbor area as CIPA 6 poverty sector representative. For those of you in the audience watching this, you should be aware that the CAB oversees the city's community services block grant funding, which provides needed services to some of the city's poorest areas. As a council representative of some of the most impoverished areas of the city, I have a great deal of respect and understanding for members of CAB. The fact is that for many organizations who serve my district, CDBG funding is their lifeline. It's what makes a difference in the lives of thousands of people on a daily basis. And one of the most difficult tasks is dealing with the reality that there is seldom if ever enough money to go around. So while I appreciate all of his work, I must say that, one, being a doctor and providing his services as a community activist is something that we really need for us to deal with, this issue of the tale of two cities. So with that, I'd like to pass over the mic to Dr. Pirman.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Reyes. I'd just like to take a minute of your time, and I know that you have a very full agenda this morning. So, thank you very much, City Council, for this resolution. It's like icing on a cake. I enjoy, I have a need, and I love volunteering for different agencies, and especially for CIPA 6, which is almost synonymous with the 15th council district. So I thank the city of L.A. for this, so it's again like icing on a cake. But most important, I want to thank you on behalf of the past and present community action board volunteers, for they spend a lot of time in working in communities and attending meetings downtown. I also like to thank staff for a fast, and I know you're busy, Ms. Lillian Cabo-Sacca, the manager, Gloria Stevenson-Clark, Bob Vilmer, Rosario Vega. And the new staff person is Paula Minor, and of course, when I came in, Mr. Parker Anderson was the manager for CDD. And I'd also like to thank the last person is Mr. Greg Dimmitt for his support in this effort. Thank you very much, Council.
Good morning, everybody. If I can ask you to please come to order. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Especially to all the kids in the audience. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. The Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 8:00 AM. The adjutant's day is on the Monday, we're here this is a Friday. And part of our tradition, the Fridays. Is to allow for presentations and reservations. Presentations for the members of the Council of Los Angeles. So today, I'd like to begin presentations by calling upon Councilmember Ed Reyes from the first office.
Thank you, Council President Padilla. Members of the Council, good morning. Today, we have a gentleman here in Council chambers, who after serving on the city's Community Action Board for the past six years will be stepping down. Dr. Peter Rivera was first elected to the cab in 1995, where he represented the Harbor area as CIPA 6 Poverty Sector Representative. For those of you in the audience, watching this, you should be aware that the cab oversees the city's community services block grant funding, which provides needed services to some of the city's poorest areas. As a council representative of some of the most impoverished areas of the city, I have a great deal of respect and understanding for members of cab. The fact is that for many organizations who serve my district, CDBG funding is their lifeline. It's what makes a difference in the lives of thousands of people on a daily basis. And one of the most difficult tasks is dealing with the reality that there is seldom if ever enough money to go around. So I appreciate all of his work. I must say that, one, being a doctor and providing his services as a community activist is something that we really need for us to deal with. This issue of the tale of two cities. So with that, I'd like to pass over the mic to Dr. Peter.
Thank you very much, Councilman Reyes. I'd just like to take a minute of your time, and I know that you have a very full agenda this morning. So, thank you very much, City Council, for this resolution. It's like icing on a cake. I enjoy, I have a need, and I love volunteering for different agencies, and especially for CIPA 6, which is almost synonymous with the 15th Council District. So I thank the city of LA for this, so it's again like icing on a cake. But most important, I want to thank you on behalf of the past and present Community Action Board volunteers, for they spend a lot of time in working in communities and attending meetings downtown. I also like to thank staff for a fast, and I know you're busy, Ms. Liliya Cabosaki, the manager, Gloria Stevenson Clark, Bob Vilmer, Rosario Vega. And the new staff person is Paula Minor. And of course, when I came in, Mr. Parker Anderson was the manager for CDD. And I'd also like to thank the last person is Mr. Greg Dimmitt for his support in this effort. Thank you very much, Councilman. Yes, please. Ms. Anderson.
I would just like to also add my bit of congratulations. Sorry to see you stepping down, but just wanted to say that Dr. Peter Rivera is one of probably the most respected leaders in the community of Wilmington and throughout the whole Harbor area. You've worked so hard, you were one of the founders of the Robert F. Kennedy Institute. You've devoted your life to really helping children. You've been the first one to talk about champion issues in our schools. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to add my bit of honor and recognition to you, Dr. Rivera.
It's a great pleasure, Dr. Rivera. You know, councilmembers, the true warriors are the staff that try to tend to all the directives and priorities of each council district. And with that, I'd just like to have, like to congratulate CDD for all their work. Next, I have... Members of the Council, this is a very special morning for me in that this is an incredible group I have brought to City Hall. They are second graders, and they're in City Hall for the first time in their lives. But don't be fooled by their age, believe me, they know what they're doing. Let me take you back a couple of weeks ago, when I had the privilege of visiting Loretto Elementary School in Cypress Park. I was met by their teacher, Miguel Mandíbel, who had advised me that his students had been reading a book. This book was based on a true story that occurred in Venezuela. In this story, a group of young children, like the ones here, found a vacant lot in their neighborhood that they wanted to convert it to a park. In the effort to make this park a reality, the children decided that they were going to go visit and respect the counseling. While upon their arrival, the council member refused to meet with the children. Not only that, but the children were met by the police department. And believe it or not, these children were ultimately being detained by the department. Was it the LAPD? When the word spread to the neighborhood from where these children came, their parents, as you might imagine, came in an hurry to retrieve their kids. While all the while, a reporter was covering the council member, as all good reporters do, laughed onto this story as it was happening. The council member, realizing that there was a reporter present, decided to meet with the children and ultimately publicly agreed to support the park. But the story doesn't end there. See, the council member never delivered on his promise. The park was not getting built despite publicity. So the children, now joined by their parents, decided to construct the park on their own. In the end, that was exactly what they ended up doing. Members of the Council, I thought that it is important to bring these children into the council chambers today for one simple reason. They told me I'd better. But I say that half jokingly, because on that day, two weeks ago, I was presented with a list of requests that these children needed to be taken care of. And I can share with you that I am working hard on this list, and I want them to know that. I also want them to come and meet all of you, so that they understand that I am not the only one here at the city who cares about them. Members, these are some of the youngest constituents that I will ever probably bring to City Council chambers. But I'm glad I did it early in my registration, because it is important that they, when we start looking at park space in our communities, and space in general, and the manner which we use that space, they like being on TV. But I'll never lose sight of who the space is for. I have certificates here for all my constituents, but also have a very special one for their teachers. Mr. Mandíbel and Ms. Camello, who are teaching the children of our community one of the most important civic lessons that the children of the area quite often don't learn. And that is that they have a right to demand service from the local officials, and that departments have a direct impact on their work, which affects the lives of our neighborhoods, all the people living in our neighborhoods. But look forward to working with them over the years and hopeful that they will continue to be active in the community for a great many years to come. I just also want to say that I'm working very hard to create forty acres of park and tail yard. And Mr. Mandíbel was one of our first advisors back in 1993 to create this space in tail yard for the northeast area. We have a quiet revolution going on in that the cornfields will also be a park. Hopefully, with your understanding, knowledge, a knowledge of Councilmember Bernstein and how we manipulate land use, we create environments in which parks complement residential, commercial areas for the benefit of our communities. So with that, I'd like to present to Miguel Mandíbel and Veronica Camello. I'd like to invite our teachers to say a few words.
Before we speak, we're going to go ahead and Councilwoman Reyes invited the children to present their points of view, their demands, their requests to the entire City Council, so they will present that now.
Un problema en nuestra comunidad es que hay muchas casas que son viejas. Los dueños de las casas maltratan a los pobres nuestros. Nosotros pensamos que deben componer las cosas viejas y que deben haber leyes para proteger a la gente pobre. También deberían bajar la renta para que la gente pobre tenga donde vivir.
Poor people have a place to live.
I just want to give a brief translation. One problem we have in our community is that there are many houses that are old. The owners of these houses treat poor people badly. We think that these houses should be fixed and that there should be laws that protect poor people. We also believe that they should lower the rent and that poor people have a decent place to live.
A nosotros nos gusta que las calles de nuestra comunidad estén sucias y que las paredes estén calladas. Nosotros pensamos que una buena solución para este problema es lavar las paredes y pintar un lugar en las paredes. También deben tener el lavazura de las paredes.
We would like the streets to be cleaned in our community and that graffiti be taken off the walls. We believe that a solution is to, in order to paint the walls and to clean them, is to paint murals. We also believe that there should be funds to pick up trash from the streets.
Un problema en nuestra comunidad es que los niños no tienen donde jugar. Los niños juegan en la calle. Nosotros pensamos que una buena solución es para este problema es hacer un parque con juegos. Debemos decirles algo, se que los hagan un parque.
Another problem in our community is that the children have nowhere to play. We, the children, play in the streets. We believe that a good solution would be to this problem is to build a park with many activities and, I guess, a sand area. We... The councilmen should build us a park. This is in the book. The children make a list of demands and take it in a scroll. And now, the children would like to present the scroll.
Lo que quiero para mi comunidad.
What I want for my community.
Más parques con juegos.
What we want for our community, more parks with activities.
Muchas plantas y árboles.
Many plants and trees.
Haga más tiendas de comida.
A secure bridge by Loretto Street and more food and stores.
Haga más tiendas de comida. Las calles limpias y bonitas. Dinero para los pobres para comprar comida. Casas, ropa, zapatos y carros.
More clean streets and beautiful streets. Money for poor people to be able to buy food, housing, houses, clothing, shoes, and cars.
Trabajos y universidades.
Jobs and universities.
Muchos murales para que no rayen las paredes.
Many murals so that there's no more graffiti on the walls.
Más escuelas y bibliotecas.
More schools and libraries.
Escrito por primero y segundo grado, Escuela Loretto.
Written by first and second grade, Loretto Street School. I just wanted to let you know on behalf of Ms. Camello and myself that everything you heard from here did not come from the teachers. They, after a community walk, after reading the book, after having literature circle, writing essays, this is what they came up with. We simply asked the question, "What is it you want in your community?", and they wrote it. They did every activity on their own. Everything that you see there, you see it's children's writing. It came from them, and it came out of the literature that they read. So out of their own education, they're using their education to come to City Hall and create a better community for themselves. And I just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. College, before we continue with presentations, I believe we do have a forum now. We give a request from members to leave early in what we hope is a relatively brief agenda. We will pause presentations for the time being, conduct the business of the agenda, and return to presentations at the end of the meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Ernst St. Galander, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Ms. Causka, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Vice, Sign of Padilla, ten members present, and a corner, Mr. President. Thank you very much, college. Before the first order of business, I'll ask that you all please rise, and members of the public to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Zine, will you please lead us? Please, here, hand over your heart, recognizing the principles of our country, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Mr. Clerk, for sort of business, approval of the minutes. Mr. Holden moves, Mr. Council second. Commendatory resolutions for a reply. Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Reyes second. Before starting the regular agenda, there's a couple items to be continued. Item number six, the applicant and Council District 10 consent to a continuance till November 9th. Item number six. Item number six, college, without objection, that shall be continued. Item number twenty-five, should be received and filed inasmuch as it has been acted on on October 2nd. Item twenty-five, request to receive and file, also without objection. Items numbers one through eight on the regular agenda, with the exception of six, are items for which public hearings have been noted. Before we take those, Mr. Reyes.
Item number five.
Item five, called special by Mr. Reyes. We don't have cards on items one through eight, so we shall deem public hearing open and closed on those items. Any other specials? Continue for four weeks, for Councilman Pacheco. Request from City 14 to continue item number four. Four weeks would be on November 6th. Without objection. Any other specials, items one through eight? We have left before us items one through three, and seven and eight. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Items numbers one and three are actually continued the hearing and the ordinance until October 26th, for a second hearing. Right, those recommendations are approved. On the regular agenda, items numbers nine through seventeen are items for which public hearings have been held. Public hearings have been held in items nine through seventeen. Any specials? Nine through seventeen. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Items numbers nine to ten to be held over for one week for a second hearing on the ordinance. Next item, please. Items numbers eighteen through twenty-seven, with the exception of twenty-five, are items for which public hearings have not been held. And I do have a card, item eighteen, that's called that special. Nineteen through twenty-seven, no request from members of the public to speak on these items. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Any specials, items nineteen through twenty-seven? Mr. Burke said he calls twenty-two special. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, and balance of the items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Mr. President, you also have a special meeting agenda before you. Did you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into that one? Yes, let's go to the special meeting agenda. Roll, please. Bernstein, Galander, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Ms. Causka, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Vice, Sign of Padilla, eleven members present, and a corner, Mr. President. Special meeting agenda, first item, please. Item number one is an item noticed for public hearing, or an item for which public hearing has been held as an ad hoc committee special reorganization succession report. Special meeting agenda, item number one, college, public hearing has been held. Anybody wish to call that special? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That item is approved. Next item, please. Let us all for the special meeting agenda. Do you wish to adjourn this meeting? Let's adjourn the special meeting agenda, return to the regular agenda. Item number five, called special by Councilmember Reyes. Mr. Reyes, from the fact.
Thank you, Council President. This is an action where I'd like to adopt the abandoning ordinance and instruct zero of street lighting to conduct a new assessment of the city.
Okay, any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Item number five has been amended. Item number five is amended, excepted without objection. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Item five is amended, is approved. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I respectfully request reconsideration of item twenty-seven for the purpose of referring it to rules and election and in the government relation relations.
Members who request to reconsider item number twenty-seven? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll and reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That item is reconsidered and without objection referred to Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
Thank you very much. This was a test of those who were close observers, and they did pass, so I suspect they will earn their keep today.
Next item, please. Item number eighteen, called special, inasmuch as a member of the public wishes to speak. Item number eighteen, college, is now before us. The council calls forward Shaymy Kramer.
Good morning, Councilmember Reyes. President Padilla, I'm Shamy Kramer, the Director of Los Angeles Two Thousand Six Incorporated. Uh, eight, nineteen months ago, we began this effort to bring this piece of business to Los Angeles, and in two weeks, a delegation of eight of us will be traveling to Johannesburg, South Africa, representing the city, and, uh, we will be attending the Federation of Gay Games' annual meeting. The reason we are asking for your support on this is because this will provide us two things. One, while we are in Johannesburg, it will show the city's intent to support this piece of business, which, uh, early estimates have a fiscal impact of over four hundred million dollars for our city. Secondly, and more important, is that, once we obtain this bid, and we are confident that we will do that, um, we will be able to get to work immediately with the city, and this will guarantee that the city departments that will be affected will be involved, and that the city's best interest will be kept in mind from now through two thousand six. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that concludes the public comments on this item. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to casual day, everybody. Or is it, no, it's breast cancer awareness. That's right. Um, I just want you all to know that, uh, the city, the mayor has strongly backed this bid. Um, I myself took place in the meeting when we had the International Federation for Gay Games come to look at Los Angeles, um, not just for the fiscal impact, but for the, the cultural impact. I think that we should all be very strongly in support of this, and I urge an eye vote for this. Um, this would bring hundreds of millions of dollars to our area, but beyond that, I think it would be an important, uh, statement for our city and, uh, the, the best home for the gay games in two thousand and six, so I urge an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for the members wishing to speak. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That item is approved. Uh, we have a request to send, uh, item number one from the special meeting agenda forth with, uh, forthwith to the mayor on that, please. Next item, please. Item number twenty-two, called special by Councilmember Garcetti. Item twenty-two is now before us. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, colleagues, as you are well aware, probably from walking through the town a couple days ago, October is domestic violence awareness month. Um, and, um, as I mentioned, a few weeks back, I was going to introduce, um, a motion to look at our domestic abuse response teams, which intervene at that most important moment of intervention, um, either when a domestic call is made or in the emergency room, um, unfortunately after there's been a domestic violence, violence incident. Um, this motion has three parts. It directs a thirty-day report back on areas of current DART services and areas still uncovered in the city by a DART response, a ninety-day report back with funding sources so that we can expand this to have citywide coverage, and also ninety-day report back with recommendations on the coordination, including funding for a full-time city staff position to act as a DART coordinator. I'm sure Councilmember Zine, um, would confirm this. We still have as our number one police call, domestic violence calls, and by the time we have that moment of intervention, oftentimes, people can't see the way out. DART teams are civilians who give a woman or a man or children a way out, not only by saying, "We are there to help you today," but that we will give you medium-term shelter, job training, create a new life for you away from your abusive environment. So, again, I would urge an eye vote on this most important matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Item twenty-two is approved. Next item, please. Mr. President, now's the time for a public comment. Now's the time for public comment and opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Seeing no requests. Public comment period for today's meeting is closed. Mr. Clerk, motions are posted in referral. Those who protest and refer, councilmembers' requests for excuse from council attendance, councilmember Garcetti requests the excuse on October twenty-fourth, he'll leave at noon for city business. This meets policy. Mr. Garcetti's excused. The dust is clear.
The dust is clear. Before returning to presentations, I'd like to, uh, call on Mr. Zine.
Mr. President and colleagues, some may wonder why we are dressed in Levis today, some without ties and our casual attire, which is not norm for our city council meetings. I just wanted to draw attention to Lee National Denim Day, and the purpose is to raise awareness and money for breast cancer research. And this year, the foundation expects to raise seven million dollars, and many council offices, many employees in city hall, our city family are supporting this effort today, including members of my staff. Uh, donations can be made to our office. Uh, you'll receive a pink ribbon, and for a five-dollar donation, which will go into the fund to benefit the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Foundation. I also want to acknowledge, uh, my communication director, Martha Walsh, for her hard work in recognizing the importance of this and coordinating this effort on behalf of City Hall. So those of us who are in Levis and casual attire are strongly supporting this awareness and the fundraising and hopefully the eradication of breast cancer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Uh, colleagues, we still have a quorum. Appreciate your patience. I believe Mr. Ridley Thomas will be bringing in a special motion for today's meeting. Uh, but in the meantime, uh, let's turn to presentations. Chair recognizes Ms. Galanter.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Um, it's my pleasure this morning to recognize two gentlemen, one of whom, uh, a few of you know, and the rest of you soon will if you don't already, and the other, I think probably not as many of us know, but you'll be glad you met him. Uh, let me start with George Parks, whom I've known for a long time now, as, as have many of you. Uh, George is being honored, he's really being honored because he's George, and he's done a lot of wonderful things for us here at home. But the particular excuse for bringing him into council today is that George has been, uh, selected as the alumnus of the year from the Los Angeles chapter of the North Carolina Central University Alumni Association, and, uh, he is on his way to compete with similarly selected alumni of the year to find out who's going to be Mr. Alumnus of the Year for the whole country. And Mr. Curtis Lynch, who's also here with us today, is also from the Los Angeles chapter of the North Carolina Central University Alumni Association, and he is the national Mr. Alumnus of the Year for this year. So we wanted to bring both of them in and, uh, let them brag a little bit. Uh, let me just say a few more words about George, because many of you, uh, if you, as I said, if you don't know him yet, you soon will. Uh, George has been president of the West Side Civic Federation, which encompasses a number of homeowner and community groups on the west side. He was one of the founders of both the Western and the Adams Neighborhood Association and the, I'm sorry, Western and Adams, and the South Carthay Association, which is what you're with now, right?
That's right.
And he's, uh, he's got his fingers in everything going on in the city, as far as I can tell. He turns up in a lot of the strangest places, uh, including as a very active alumnus of his university, something that all of us should take note of. Uh, and I just have to tell one story, or Phil, I'd like you to tell the basketball story. All right, I'm gonna tell. This is, this is one of the little, one of those things they kept out of the history books, that both these gentlemen know about, but nobody else did. When George was in college, the college was called North Carolina College for Negroes. Most of you are too young to remember these days, but, uh, not all of us are. Um, and they had a pretty hot basketball team at the North Carolina College for Negroes. Now, of course, in those days, black teams and white teams weren't allowed in the same room, let alone playing on the same court. However, however, they, they couldn't use the same drinking fountain. It was a nasty time. Um, however, because they were such a good team, there was this team at Duke University Medical School, which was, of course, white at the time, all white at the time. And so they, uh, they snuck in, I don't know who set this up, but they actually played a basketball game, and you'll tell us the score when we get to your turn. Um, but they, this, they played several games, and all of these were played in secret and kept in secret for fifty-two years, until the New York Times Magazine and National Public Radio's Morning Edition discovered this interesting fact, revealed to all the world that we were able to actually maintain a cordial and integrated basketball tournament over the years without anybody having to make a fuss about it. And if only we could do that in life a little more often, it would be a wonderful example to all of us. So I would like to say congratulations to North Carolina Central University, as it is now, for a, uh, both for, for doing that and for encouraging it and for keeping it secret when people might have gotten hurt. And I want to congratulate George on his triumph as the local alumnus of the year. And then I'd like to also thank Mr. Lynch, who has been quietly the, uh, national alumnus of the year, and obviously also came out of the Los Angeles chapter. This is a long way from North Carolina, but it's not that long away, and I think certainly the events of last month have taught us that, um, we really are all one country, and here we are. So, George, it is my great pleasure to present this to you as Mr. Alumni of Two Thousand One.
While, while taking the photograph, uh, Ms. Galanter.
Hang on, I'm gonna, I gotta give Mr. Lynch his two.
Okay, come on.
Don't cheat the man.
No, I wouldn't think of it.
Mr. Lynch, it's my pleasure to give this to you. Okay, Mr. President, you were saying?
I was about to, uh, sup- support, uh, your rendition of oral history and to acknowledge that, uh, George Parks, in particular, is a preeminent oral historian, um, and knows more about the narrative of many ethnic groups in this town, and that is in part why, uh, he is so deserving of the accolades that he is about to, uh, experience. So we want to join in support of that and more.
Thank you. All right, George, your turn.
Thank you very much, Councilman Galanter, and thank you for your remarks. Uh, I do appreciate this opportunity to be here and also with Curtis Lynch. Curtis was elected to the North Carolina College Central Alumni Association, uh, LA chapter, and then went to Durham, and where he was elected national chairman. And last year, the Los Angeles Alumni Chairman put me to work and said I'd have to run for the national again. I hadn't run before, but do it now. And Curtis jumped in and has worked with me through. Now, what does it mean for me to be recognized as a local Mr. Alumni Association and go to Durham, North Carolina, raising funds for the national? The money goes strictly to scholarships for students to attend North Carolina Central University. And when I enrolled in North Carolina Central University in nineteen forty-two, I arrived there on a basketball and football scholarship and a work scholarship. And therefore, I earned my way through college working there on campus. And this is an opportunity for me to return to the university with some funds to help others go through the college. The secret game against Duke University is a matter of history. Dr. John Hope Franklin and a number of members of the faculty, uh, brought our students together and some Duke students to teach them about what the world was all about. We just had a race riot there in Durham, North Carolina at that time. And as we were meeting with them, one day, one of the persons said he wanted to, uh, do something. I said, "Saturday, do we have an athletic game?" And they said, "We want to play," and I said, "Sure, you can play it." And when that message arrived to Coach J.B. McLendon, he knew that if anything like that happened in Durham, the whole school would go. But he then told all the students, "Don't, uh, come to the gym, close the gym down, and put the basketball players from Duke in cars with sheets over them," and that's where that basketball game took place. And the New York Times picked that up when Coach McLendon was given national honors in nineteen sixty-six. I thank you so much for that. I'm representing the city of L.A. in Durham, and I do appreciate the opportunity to serve the city of L.A.
Thank you so much.
Step aside for your predecessor, Mr. Lynch.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes, uh, I'd like to thank the council, and particularly, uh, Councilwoman Galanter, for this, uh, recognition. And I would just briefly like to say, since George took up most of the two minutes of each one in his head.
Yeah.
That the fact that Jo- uh, George is from Kentucky and attended North Carolina Central University, I'm from Dallas, Texas. I attended North Carolina Central University, and we both came to work in, uh, Los Angeles. He is still at work. I'm retired from the probation department, twenty, after twenty-eight years, but I would like to say it shows you that there is reciprocity in this thing.
Yes.
And the fact that we came from such diverse places to the university and to here shows you that what goes around comes around.
All right, sir. Well, thank you. Mr. Holden?
Uh, Mr. President, members, I'd like to join with you in this.
Simon, if you would help us, uh, with the noise level.
And all congratulating Mr. Lynch and George Parks, uh, for their contribution, giving back a university on which they received and derived so much, and so give them the support they needed, knowing they're going to live and be successful. George, I had the pleasure of working with when he was the supervisor, deputy, private, that he was a real estate broker and involved in real, as a realtor in the city of Los Angeles, and a law professor. I mean, if something that needed to be done, George just about got it going. And so, uh, I'd say you were a gold trotter, the Tuskegee Airman, I mean, the defender of human rights and rights of America. Were you in?
I was there.
Gold, gold trotter? I mean, human, Tuskegee, Tuskegee. All right, so, everybody knows about those Tuskegee Airmen. Never lost a bomber over Germany, went in daylight flying, sacrificed her own life, but assisted us in winning that war, even in daylight. They were the only ones that could fly daylight over that wind. So I want to, again, join with Ruth Galanter. She's always doing something good once in a while here, and congratulate her for selecting these two individuals to come down and see this combination today. I'll give you a hand, Ruth.
Thank you, Nate. The sound of one hand slap. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. President, I have just one more, of which I, I'm not sure if they're here for presentation, but I just want to announce that, uh, next week is Public Power Week, and, um, we have an opportunity, all of us, to, um, take note of the fact that we have the largest and most successful public power company in.
There you are.
We have the largest and most successful public utility in the country. We, uh, after years of people making nasty noises about us, we are the envy of the entire state, as well we should be. And one of the reasons that we are is that we have, after many years, finally made a real effort to, uh, shift our focus from the old-style power company that was forever trying to sell more power and generate it out of those awful-looking things with terrible, that do terrible things to the air, to a company that is a leader in conservation and in teaching people how to conserve so it doesn't hurt and it, in fact, saves you money, and which, uh, is, today celebrated the one-millionth mile that our electric vehicle fleet has driven. Mr. Garcetti drove the car through the barrier with me explaining to him how to do it. Um, hey, if you're going to be a backseat driver, you might as well take every opportunity. Um, and we also, as you know, have a solar power incentive program to help people fund their, their solar installations and to, to move further in the direction of the kind of responsible, um, power generation that, that we hope is the way for the future. So we will have a resolution, but it isn't all typed up pretty yet, but I wanted to introduce Randy Howard, uh, from the Department of Water and Power to speak briefly about Public Power Week, and I know you will all join me in congratulating the department and egging them on to do ever better.
Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, we are very excited about celebrating Public Power Week this next week. It's our goal to kind of open the doors, uh, provide some opportunities for the public, the community to come in to see our facilities. We're having open houses at all of our branch offices all next week. We have an open house tomorrow in West L.A. at one of our district yards with lots of activities for the community. We have an open house next week in Northridge for the community of that area to come in. We have an open house next week in Northridge for the community of that area to come in to see what happens on the other side of the walls of our facilities. And we're very excited to celebrate this week with the city of Los Angeles. And for further information, you may call 1-800-DIAL-DWP.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter, for those two presentations. And Mr. Parks and Mr. Lynch, we appreciate your presence in the council chambers. While we now recognize Mr. Padilla for a very special presentation. And while he comes, Mr. Curry, Mr. Landry, and Mr. Banks, your assistance in maintaining some semblance of order would be appreciated, not from the position that you currently occupy, Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, standing here to my left, I believe is a familiar face to all of you, part of the city family, presenting this recognition today on behalf of our colleague, Councilmember Nick Pacheco, who couldn't be here today. Hillary Norton, Hillary Norton Orosko, now we gotta use that name a couple of years. Although she's not currently employed by the city of Los Angeles, nonetheless, a deep part of the city family. I believe Mr. Ridley Thomas, at one point in time, she worked for you. I know she was interning in Mayor Ragan's office.
Legendary.
She worked for my predecessor, Richard Alarcon. She worked for Councilmember Pacheco's predecessor, Richard Alatorre. Since leaving City Hall, she's continued to work in the downtown area, focusing on the economic revitalization efforts, first under the office of Assemblymember Gilce Deo, and most recently as the Legislative Director for the Central City Association. But Councilmember Pacheco wanted to recognize her, not just as a constituent, but truly we share in her joy and in her happiness as she moves on into the next big step in her life and in her career, as she's becoming Vice President of Public Affairs for a firm that we're all familiar with, Fleishman Hiller. So we wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of Councilmember Pacheco to recognize our sister here in the city. And I personally wanted to thank her publicly for the first time. I thank for those conversations at Kama Restaurants late at night or at McCormick and Schmicks when I was first getting involved in government and politics. And I want to thank her for the help she lent to me early on. So Hillary, we're happy for you. We expect nothing but great things, as always, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. There are a couple of persons who seem to be heard. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I'm embarrassed, Mr. Orosko, right now, but back in the early 90s, when her and her now-husband Gerard were staffers, I remember being a staffer myself, sitting in that corner by that pillar, watching all the eye contact. And, what, 12, 7 years later? Now they have, how many kids now, Hillary? One child. So it's great to see the city family grow, not only as a family, within the city family, but as a true family. And I would just want to appreciate her, follow her support and her words of wisdom throughout the years. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
If you'd give me the prerogative, Councilman, I wanted to ask and really thank you all and tell you how honored I am, because many of you may not know this, but it's 10 years ago this summer that I started here in the city working for Mayor Tom Bradley as an intern when my future, one of my future bosses, Councilman Richard Alarcon, was the Valley Coordinator when I was doing part of my work for Councilmember Mark Ridley Thomas and actually part of my work for Councilmember Richard Alatorre. And that was the summer of 91, and I took my finals in graduate school in April of 1992 and watched in horror as the upheaval happened. And I asked the Councilman permission to tell you this, because I don't think many of you know this, but I turned down the job that I had waiting for me in Washington, D.C. and I came back to Councilman Ridley Thomas's office and I begged, I begged to work for him. In fact, I begged so much that I said, because I had just gotten out of graduate school, his legislative deputy at the time was going to get married in September, and I said, I will work for you for free until September so that I could hit the ground running. And I will never forget that you gave me that chance and how important it was. And I know that every single one of those gray hairs that you have are mine, but I wanted to say that it was so important. And on behalf of staffers, I just want to tell you all that I am so jealous of you in some ways, because you have this amazing seat, no chairs, but amazing seat for greatness. And I watched as this council body came back from the upheaval, as this council body brought the city back from the earthquake, and this really is such an honor for me, because I really think that this is the public policy emergency room. And every single day, the city of Los Angeles is stretched out on that table. And I have watched you all, as staffers, as councilmembers, grapple with the big issues, knowing that you were going to go home and be confronted by them, by the humanity of all of us, every single day. And I can't tell you how angry I am when I read in the paper that people think this council doesn't care, because I have never, in the eight years that I've been a staffer and in the three years that I have not, I have never known that to ever be the case. And I just really want to thank you all and as staffers, I have to say, it's true. Gerard was working for Richard Alatorre and I was working for Mark Ridley Thomas, and we would gaze across the room at each other. And I developed two loves there, the love of public policy and the love for Gerard. And actually, all your offices are on the same floor now, but we used to have interior windows to a courtyard, and we actually had a pulley system and wrote notes to each other before the email. So now you have emails, so you don't have to do that. But I just wanted to say thank you so much. It has been such an honor to listen to you all grapple with the big issues. And like it or not, as much as we in the audience may, may want to take over, you're the ones with the operating instruments, and you've done a wonderful job. And your finest days may be ahead of you, but you had some pretty fine ones when I worked here, and I just want to thank you so much for honoring me.
Thank you. We appreciate you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla and Mr. Orosko. Senor Gerard, we salute you, sir. We pray for you. Wish you Godspeed. Mr. Clerk, I think Ms. Haan has a special introduction she wishes to make, and then there's a special or two that must be taken up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hillary mentioned the big issues that we're grappling with on a daily basis, and one of the bigger issues we're grappling with is affordable housing in Los Angeles. And they're not here for any formal presentation, but I would like to officially welcome the Housing L.A. Religious delegation, who are with us today to support the full funding of the Housing Trust Fund. Thank you for being here today.
Many familiar faces, veterans of many honorable causes. Once again, on behalf of the city council, we welcome you to these chambers. All right? Mr. Clerk, what have we?
Yes, special one is before you. There's a city attorney who will speak to the need to make the findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has to do with the, with the DASH, and L.A. DOT was trying to get a DASH together for the area bounded by Western Slauson, Pacific, and Manchester boulevards. And the DASH was delayed for the vehicles to be ordered. The Watts Labor Community Action Committee has agreed to temporarily contract with the city, and the supervisor, Burke, has committed the necessary resources. She just did that earlier this week, and therefore, the council needs to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act. And then you would vote on that and also on the contract and on the authorization of the general manager of L.A. DOT to execute the county.
Well, thank you very much on the findings. Open the roll. Please close the roll, non-tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, the matter is before us. Members of the council, just by way of clarification, this is a narrowly defined issue as relates to DASH. I indicated to you last Wednesday that I would bring in a motion further clarifying, and I think we've done that. It is now before you for disposition. I note that there's a speaker. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and thank you for bringing this further in a more comprehensive matter. The first discussion took place on Wednesday on this issue. The version of the motion Wednesday had a segment of the motion that called for a report or recommendations or an update from our Department of Transportation relative to the other three DASH, excuse me, smart shuttle lines that were impacted. If agreeable with you, I'd like to be also, in the course of this action, request that same report and briefing from DOT.
Just a matter of clarification, the reason the motion is written as it is now, this matter is not related to the smart shuttle. That was the confusion. This is a DASH exclusively. Smart shuttle is an entirely different matter, and I'd be glad to suggest that a motion be brought in, which I'm prepared to support. But this is narrowly defined for a specific route that is DASH-specific, money connected to the county board of supervisors, specifically Mrs. Burke, to fund this with WLCAC. This is not to be confused with the larger issue that took place in terms of the smart shuttles having been terminated by MTA. So it would be my point of view that we should proceed with the motion as it is intact and take up that item, the separate item, because they are in fact separable.
No, and I would think there's a conflict here. If I understood correctly from Supervisor Burke when I spoke with her, this is part of fulfilling the service that had been cut previously in an area that had no other type of service, whether it was DASH service or bus service, et cetera. I would think it's in conflict to request an update from our Department of Transportation just to ensure that people who represent the other areas of the city, that those services have not been compromised.
All right, Mr. Burnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that this does not concern one of the other three areas where my shuttles were terminated, but just for the record, I think this was a big mistake of the MTA. We talked a lot about multimodal transportation and about, if you spend any time outside the United States or other parts of the United States, you see public transportation that actually serves people, riders. And this was an example of where folks could go off just the main avenues and actually be taking with their groceries much closer to where they live, sometimes in front of their apartments, et cetera. And here we go, making a step backwards with this, and I understand many of the fiscal constraints, but to me, this seemed to have been an important step forward, and I hope that we don't just focus on this one, but also in my own district along the Vermont corridor, we had one as well, and we really need to reexamine getting those smart shuttles back.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, I was very disappointed when the MTA followed Supervisor Molina's opposition to the smart shuttle. And I had hoped the mayor would put in a motion. I urged him to do so, he didn't do it. But I think it's not over with yet. I think this is going to happen. I think it's going to be reinstated. This particular route, I understand, is one that was promised by DOT some time ago, and it does not duplicate an existing MTA route. So I can justify supporting this time, but I would hope that we approve this contingent upon the fact that if MTA reinstates the smart shuttle, which I'm hoping it will, that we do not have to fund this out of our proxy funds, because this basically is an MTA responsibility. We already have a very strong DASH system, which we do fund out of our tax money, and I think that we have to at least watch the dollar and cents side of this thing. So I hope that will be satisfactory, that we support this contingent upon the fact if MTA doesn't reinstate it. Is that satisfactory?
All right. Thank you.
Okay, and I promise you that I will push for it on the MTA.
And I believe that.
Okay?
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, I think it's appropriate to have a staff report on the smart shuttle. You know, we're just talking about something that we don't have too much.
I think that's appropriate, Mr. Holden, and I thank you very much. And it would be useful to clarify or make the distinction between that which is...
All my time.
Yes. That which is before us and the smart shuttle that was scuttled. Sir, name, rank, and serial number.
Jim Lefton, Department of Transportation. We've been before the city council a number of times over the past several years regarding the smart shuttle project. It was originally funded by the MTA through the Coffer Project as a two-year demonstration project. It evolved over time into basically, as was described earlier, an MTA helper service, helping to reduce overcrowding on segments of heavily utilized MTA routes. We've gone to council the last two years, identifying the fact that this is an MTA helper service and that if MTA were to continue funding, we would recommend continuing to operate the service if MTA funding were to go away, that we recommend the cancellation of the service. The council has approved those recommendations for the past two years. MTA funded it entirely last year, and this year agreed to fund it only through September 30th. We have been working closely with MTA staff in an effort to try to get them to continue funding the program, but the MTA Board elected not to continue funding beyond September 30th. So DOT followed through with this plan to cancel the service based on council direction. With regard to the DASH service, that was a service that was identified in the Mid-City's Bus Transfer Restructuring Study that DOT and MTA conducted a couple of years ago. We went through the Coffer Projects and we were awarded funding by the MTA to buy vehicles for that service, and we're planning on placing an order very soon and having the vehicles sometime early next fiscal year. But that particular route happened to duplicate the smart shuttle routing in the South Side area, so there is some logic to expediting the startup of that DASH service so that there's no break in service between the cancellation of the smart shuttle and the implementation of the new DASH.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. You wish to continue.
Anything you want to add to it? No. Mr. President, members... Four years ago, MTA offered DOT $10 million, I think it was, to commence this program. And I guess some bears and friends would be operating this smart shuttle program. That's the way I think it got through. I suggested then that the $10 million could be poorly spent, that the city, DOT, could use that money elsewhere and get more benefit from it. And these guys voted for it anyway. It was a failure from the very beginning, four years ago, it was a failure two years ago, and you suggested that MTA continue to spend the money. You were dead wrong. I fought with you over it. Make mistake after mistake, and you throw good money after bad. And that's a mistake. I can't see for the life of me how you guys can come together and throw away the public's money. Smart shuttle was never going to work. In the case, this particular case, Mr. President, members...
Yes, sir. Help yourself.
Where there was no transportation at all, portable. All right. But the rodentship has always been very, very low. I don't know what the amendment was, but the monies that Miss Burke is intending to give to the city for the purpose of continuing this so-called line, call it a smart shuttle or anything, until DASH is online, hey, it's okay. But let the other supervisors do the same thing for their district if that's what you really want. And so I would say that we have to support the motion before us, because we do in fact need to afford a transportation in that area, and the DASH program will be funded by MTA correct, and what portion of that will we pay, if at all?
The DASH service will be funded, I'm understanding, during this interim period until we get a new option.
I know you call it a DASH, but the smart shuttle will be funded by Miss Burke.
Right.
Okay, fine, get the terminology right. But the DASH is going to be funded by... But the DASH is going to come online, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that'll be fun, you said it by MTA?
The MTA funded the vehicle for this. The city would fund the operation cost.
Right, so the city gonna have matching. All right, how much did the city contribute to the Smart Shuttle? They did give money, how much?
I believe it's an 80/20 split.
80/20 split. We threw our money down the tube.
My, my, my.
And you supported it and you recommended it. And these guys voted for it.
That's right, Mr. Garcetti, Mrs. Hahn, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Zine.
No, they were not even here. I can't blame them for that. It's the old timers voted for it.
Who?
A good example, you know, sometimes you're gonna have term limits, please. All right.
All right, Mr. Reyes, I think it's about time that we hear from you.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the council, if you read the verbiage on the third paragraph, where outlines, what states which outlines the need to promote the provision of shuttles and other services that increase access to and within the regional centers, major economic activity areas to encourage growth, there has mitigate the traffic impacts of that growth. Essentially, this gives us an opportunity to start looking at our system from a different point of view. I can share with you that we have a DASH system from Pico Union Echo Park, the highest ridership in the city because it connects people to hospitals, to parks, to libraries, to clinics, to the pharmacy, things that people who are transit dependent need. After school as well, it allows kids to be able to get to school without having to walk to two or three different gang territories. So these are the realities of our areas who are transit dependent. So this allows us the opportunity to look at what it is that we need using technologies, systems like Smart Shuttle, DASHes, and create that third tier that supplements existing lines. Does not take away from that cash revenue, but supplements our current systems. It provides for us to look at multi-use facilities as a center of growth around rail stations and connect the neighborhoods to these locations with these systems. We now have that opportunity to do that. So it could be a blessing in disguise. The fact is, hopefully with the advent of neighborhood councils, with the advent of advocates, nonprofits, people who are serving transit dependent can give us destination points and support our Department of Transportation to create an enlightenment that makes sense that will truly have ridership likely have demonstrated in the Pico Union Echo Park line. Highland Park, blue lights are coming on, the station's online. It connects the people who live up in the hills to come down to the station and not have to use the parking facilities. We can connect the people transit dependent on the flatlands to again connect to the hospitals. So it is a challenge for us, council members, but it truly is an opportunity.
Mr. Reilly Thomas. Mr. President, members of the council, this motion clarifies the motion that was submitted on this past Tuesday. I beg your pardon. I'm prepared to move it forward if in fact there's a desire to review other routes. There should be the four routes, not three. This is not a substitute in this area. It should be inclusive. Either we have four that would be reviewed or another motion would need to be submitted. And the suggestion by Mr. Burnson is also acceptable. What then, Mr. President, I think we can expose this matter and move on to the next side of the business. Mr. Holden.
Just asking another question, Mr. President. Tell them what the Smart Shuttle is. It gets off route, go to your homes, pick you up, take you back, put you in a ride, which means it's not so smart. Tell them what the intent of Smart Shuttle would be.
The original intent of Smart Shuttle was to provide kind of a flexible third tier type service that would pick people up at their homes, take them to destinations, connect them to major transit routes. It also included entrepreneurial goals, which would be seed money that after two, three years it would be self-sufficient. And there's also desire to maintain, integrate as part of the existing transit system. And some of those goals, I think, defeated the other goals and we ended up, and a number of other reasons, ended up basically running on top of MTA to resume.
What it says is that they're gonna make some millionaires that they could. The renewers were supposed to after two years, we bought their buses for them, we gave them the money to operate at no loss, they were guaranteed a profit. And then at the end of two years, they should have been smart enough to make it work for themselves, we were putting them in business. It was like a glorified taxi company. That's what it was supposed to be. You go to your home, you make a phone call and then you get back in a ride. And I said, "No, why is it gonna use a rodent ship?" It'd be low, you couldn't justify it. It was just a no, another way of spending some extra money. They could have used for the kids and for buses and for bus passes, for seniors and so on. MTA could have used it, but they didn't. It's a no-good idea then, no-good idea not. Sure, you can be creative and innovative, but come up with a plan, use it on the neighborhood route. Say, "Here's what'll work for us," and the rodent ship will be there and you can justify the ride. They had no documentation that they could justify anything stupid as that. That was the point made. Now you gotta eat croak.
Mr. Burnson.
Mr. Burnson. Somebody throw a blanket or something over Nate, will ya? First of all, let me make one small correction, okay? When Smart Shuttle was, the concept of Smart Shuttle was not necessarily to pick people up at their homes. No, that's something else. No, that is not correct. I know what I'm looking for, but you don't. The point is, the purpose of Smart Shuttle, the purpose of Smart Shuttle was basically to connect areas where transportation centers were, where people didn't have a bus service, it would get them to service. That was the main purpose. We have a service that assists people who senior ride and things like that, which takes people up at their house, takes them to the hospital, takes them to market, stuff like that. In fact, at one time, we even funded a program where we gave coupons for taxi cabs. I don't know if you were here at that time. You were, and you remember that because it's a lot cheaper than running a bus and paying a driver, whether they're union or otherwise, obviously. One of the benefits as far as MTA was concerned was the Smart Shuttle drivers were not unionized, whereas the MTA, the DASH drivers are all unionized. So there is a difference in cost involved also, some of these things. The main purpose of, and it may not have worked out that way when they started the service, but the main thing was to put a connector in where there was no ability for people to get to transportation. A good example of that was the Chatsworth Station with people coming in from Ventura County when there was no way to connect to get to Warner Center, which was a employment center. And for a while, we had a Smart Shuttle there. Well, now we have a DASH service there and it works a lot better, to be very honest with you. And it covers also our North East Station. But, you know, we need to pad the ability to flood these holes. I think some of the objection that the MTA was, they felt that some of these Smart Shuttle lines ran a little, it took, you know, it didn't wear in competition actually with MTA routes, and that was the big argument. So one of the things, and I don't have any service in my district, by the way, and haven't had for over a year or more on the Smart Shuttle, so I'm not just speaking from my own benefit, I'm speaking for the benefit of areas that don't have it and need it, that we need to, if we can't get it done through MTA, then we may have to do it ourselves. Nate, please, I didn't interrupt you, okay? The point is that, you know, I'm supporting this, but I think if we can possibly get MTA to fund it, they are responsible, they are the County Transportation Commission. And it's their responsibility to provide accessibility to stations and transportation for people in the county of Los Angeles. And I think they just would like to shift this onto the city and let the city pay for it instead of them. And I think that's one of the main reasons that we should try to get support for reinstating at least some of the lines that make sense. And if not, then we'll have to look at it from a different point of view.
Mr. Reilly Thomas.
That ends the discussion, nobody else is waiting to speak. Mr. Clerk, will be clear over voting on it? Yes, you have a special one before you, as amended by Mr. Burnson and accepted by Mr. Reilly Thomas. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Worth report back to the Transportation Committee. Next item, please. Do you wish to let it go forthwith? Yes, please. Item number special two, not on the agenda, is a motion by Mr. Reilly Thomas, seconded by Ms. Miskowski. The city attorney will speak to the need to make a finding. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has to do with the ME Awards on Tuesday, October 2nd. The council declared the ME Awards a special event. The police department has now come in and asked that sidewalks, that they be allowed to close some of the sidewalks in the area additionally to what was approved on Tuesday. The event is on this Sunday, October 7th, so the council needs to make the findings and then take a vote on the motion.
Questions or comments on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Special two is now before us, nobody's pushing to speak. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Special two is approved. Forthwith on that. Next item, please. The dust is clear. Adjourned motions? Seeing none, thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.